Planning and zoning commission public hearing for October 22, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Commissioners David Sterns, Hanson, Rose, and Levine are present, and Commissioner Van Dyke and Malloy are absent. I just wanted to go and ask, like we normally do at all public hearings, if anyone, any of the commissioners feel that the topics that we're going to be discussing tonight would present a conflict of interest based on their businesses or other activities. So, does anybody have any concerns about conflict of interest? Hearing none, we will move forward. We have two cases tonight. Because they are related, we're going to really consider both cases at the same time. So, I'd like to open up the public hearing for case number O R A 13-0002, which is to amend the area of city impact agreement with the City of Hauser, and case number Z O N 13 hyphen 0003, which would amend the zoning within the Hauser ACI to reflect Cootney County zoning. The new agreement that we have in front of us is something we've seen before, and it was a collaborative effort between the city and the county that included meetings with the public. It's been approved by the joint City of Hauser and Cootney County Planning and Zoning Commission. It's been approved by Hauser Planning and Zoning Commission, and it's been approved by the City of Hauser City Council with slight recommendations for changes. Tonight, the hearing, public hearing process is going to be the same. Director Callahan will come up and give us an overview of what we're going to be looking at today. Then we'll go to the public comment. And then, once that is done, we'll close the public hearing and then move into deliberations. So, I'm going to turn this over to Director Callahan to give us an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. By way of quick history, I should mention that this ACI has been a joint effort by the city staff, the county staff. They and we have spent considerable time with the public to put it into a place that's before you tonight in a way that I'm pleased to say there is no opposition. That took some doing. We spent five public meetings with various property owners out at the Hauser Fire District, or Fire Barn, if you will. And each of those meetings, we had at least 20 people, sometimes in the 30 or so range. We had good dialogue. We got good back and forth. That's among the reasons why I believe there's no one here in opposition. So, I'm very confident that the actual agreement, the wording of the agreement, and the map that's before you are all properly before you. I will add one more thing. The usefulness to me of this amendment is it eliminates some, in my view, unnecessary process, like the city's review of a certain class of permits. All that class business is done away with. It's straightforward. Now, in the same way it is with every other ACI we have, where the county reviews it under the county's regulations, we refer it to the city for their comments, but they don't have to actually process anything. That's enormously helpful for property owners. It streamlines things immensely. And it also, with going to the county zoning, it makes it much more efficient for my staff because the current city zoning is difficult to interpret. It's a performance-based code where you have to literally read through each zoning district and read through these certain criteria to find out if your project meets enough points to be granted approval. That's the sort of thing I've seen in very sophisticated cities, very sophisticated, like Denver, or, you know, big cities. It's unnecessary for a small community of 700, in my view. And it's also the sort of thing that's just bogged things down. So, I think this is properly before you for your consideration. I asked that you voted up or down. I think the amendment's in a place where we really shouldn't be wordsmithing it at this point. The map is as well. And I know that Connie Krueger has contacted us, is in support of this, and Rand is here and would like to speak when you're ready for that part.
And for us, we have, David, Director Callahan has briefed us twice at our workshops, and the first workshop, we reviewed this. There were some recommendations for changes which were adopted in the text. So, I think that, the good news is, I think we're pretty aware of what is in here. Anybody have any questions for David?
Connie just joined us, so after Vlad's done, we could reach out to her and see if she wants to speak.
Okay. You'll control that.
By Zoom, I mean.
Yeah, exactly. All right. If no one has any questions, then I'll open the public comment period for the O R A 13- hyphen 0002 and case number Z O N 13 hyphen 003, and we'll use the normal procedures. And since Rand is here, who knows more about it than I probably do, I won't go through the procedures for Rand. So, I'll let him come up and speak.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, both present and online. Rand Wickman, for the record. I am here representing some property owners on the south side of Highway 53 within the current and proposed Hauser area of city impact. I do want to express my appreciation of staff's efforts on this. It took a long time. It took a lot of staff effort. And frankly, it's long overdue that we're here. The fact that this area city impact agreement lasted 20-some years is actually a little bit shocking to me. I think it was kind of an experiment when it started, and it probably should have ended the experiment after five or six years, but here we are. I do have some concerns for the agreement as proposed, and these are similar to the comments I made to the Joint Planning Commission, but with some additional thought put into it this time. And so, like many of the ACIs in Cootney County, the area included in this agreement is overbroad. I heard some discussion of that among the planning commissioners at your workshop last week, mostly with concern for the area north of the lake. I agree with that, but I would suggest that the issue is even more egregious on the other end, the area south of Highway 53. The City of Post Falls has recently approached property owners there, seeking their consent to annex the property. They are actively working on creation of a new urban renewal district in that area. Annexation to Post Falls will likely occur in the next couple of years. It makes sense, as they can provide appropriate public services, such as sewer, that Hauser just simply cannot and will not provide in the foreseeable future. This area will become something worthwhile if it's annexed to Post Falls. The property owners will never consent to annexation to Hauser, as it offers no benefit, only additional taxes. Logically, this area should not be within Hauser's ACI, but should be reserved to be included within a City of Post Falls area city impact when that gets renegotiated. My second concern is for the fee structure that's outlined in the agreement. I mentioned this at the last hearing on this issue as well. I don't believe it meets the legal requirements for charging fees on land use applications, and I could go into more detail on why that's so, but I don't think it's necessary to make my point. The response I received to these comments at the last hearing was that, you know, something analogous to, "The fee arrangement has lasted for a long time in that situation, and it really isn't much money anyway." And neither of those things make it right or legally defensible, of course. It's just less likely to be challenged. And I heard some discussion of the fee arrangement at your last workshop, and appreciate that some of the commissioners also have some discomfort with that situation. If Hauser wants fees, there are appropriate ways to do that without the county being burdened with the administration or having to defend what those fees are, and I think that really should be looked at here. With regard to both the map situation and the fees, I recognize, we are not starting from a blank page here. We have a bad situation with the current agreement. We need to change that. I know of no one that's not affiliated with the City of Hauser that doesn't recognize that. If this current agreement is really the best deal we can negotiate with the city, then perhaps we are better served to take the incremental improvement of purging the Hauser Development Code from the unincorporated area, and we live to fight another day over the balance of the issues. The City of Post Falls can and will completely ignore the area city impact agreement if it suits them to do so, but collectively, and by that I mean the county, the City of Post Falls, the City of Hauser, shouldn't we all believe in the value of good planning so we don't put the City of Post Falls in that position? Isn't that the purpose of the area city impact, to provide some certainty as to what's going to happen? We should have a map that reflects what we expect to happen, especially when that coincides with what we think makes the most sense. On the fee side of it, the county can simply refuse to forward the fees to the City of Hauser after this is adopted and say that the structure is not supported by the laws that govern fees. And one action's no more or less illegal than the other. Fees aren't enough money to justify a legal battle anyway, right? But again, we shouldn't be putting the county in that position, deciding which one is the lesser violation of the law. We should believe in doing the right thing. We should adopt proper ordinances that don't set us up for failure or future confrontation. I wasn't party to the negotiations that occurred to get us to this point, so I don't know who deserves the blame for standing in the way of a proper ACI agreement. I'm sure that the county staff argued till they were blue in the face. I suspect, you know, that none of you planning commissioners deserve any of the blame for that, so I apologize that you have to listen to my concerns. I also, lastly, I recognize we're now going through the motions of public participation because the law requires that we do so in order to adopt this agreement. Nothing's likely to change in the draft that's before you. I recognize that because Hauser won't go along. If that's the case, then so be it, but I hope we can all do better in the future, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ryan.
[inaudible]
Oh, we have a question from, is that Wes?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
You seem to be advancing the case for Post Falls, but what would the enactment of this as is? Why do you feel it would put Post Falls in jeopardy? How far away is downtown Post Falls from the south part of this annexation proposal?
Well, I wasn't actually aware that Post Falls had an actual downtown Commissioner Hanson, but that's kind of the inside joke in Post Falls, is they've really struggled to define a downtown for a long time. They're not far, the edge of their city is not far from the, it's less than a half a mile, as I recall, looking at the map, from the southern boundary of the ACI. It may even be closer than that. So, they're not far. They're within reach by annexing a couple of parcels. You know, they're within reach of getting all the way to Highway 53, and that's their intent with this annexation that they are talking about doing.
Yeah. How far does their sewage, how close is that?
The, I don't know, I know they've been working on, they need a lift station out in that area, and so it is down, closer to Seltice is probably the northernmost extent of the lift station in that area.
I can help a little bit on this one. That's actually part of the urban renewal district.
Yes.
The request that's been before the county commissioners is it would make sewage a possibility in this area because there are federal grants to help the city make that happen.
And they would annex their way up Pleasant View, essentially, is where that would go.
So, I wanted to ask, speaking of Pleasant View, is the area there where Pleasant View and Highway 53, can I mean, is that within the Post Falls city limits? Does Post Falls go out that far now?
Yes, Post Falls goes out nearly to the state line.
Okay.
And they are, you know, they're at Seltice, and they are looking to annex up Pleasant View, clear up to Highway 53, and I expect we will see that. And my whole point is, you know, it's not that Post Falls can't do that, but, you know, part of the exercise of doing these area city impact agreements is to provide the public and, you know, just to declare to the world, "This is what we envision happening." And when we know that that is going on now, you know, we ought to recognize it. The county has no meaningful ability to influence annexations, although you can, as you have in this agreement. You have a prohibition on annexing outside of your area of city impact, and, you know, I think there's some merit to those kinds of provisions in an agreement. You know, that doesn't exist in the agreement that the city has with Post Falls, which is the shared ACI agreement, of course. But, you know, that's about the only way that the county could influence an annexation. But again, the purpose of the ACIs is to give us some predictability, you know, what city is this likely to be in? And that area south of 53 is not going to be in the City of Hauser.
If we looked at other ACIs, David, just curiosity-wise, would there be similar situations like that, that when it was originally done, they thought this may go one way, and now this one would be going to Post Falls? So, if we looked at the, you know, Hayden?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I think the central issue with this case is easily resolved. The moment the City of Post Falls annexes, the Hauser ACI goes away.
That portion of whatever is annexed.
So, in that way, this is harmless.
It doesn't hurt it.
Right.
It doesn't preclude it from happening, doesn't help it, doesn't hurt it.
In this term, there was actually precedent for that. There was a small area west of, out of road with the extended.
Oh, three of them.
That was actually in the Post Falls area city impact that was, that was one we annexed into the City of Coeur d'Alene.
Okay.
It's part of the Mill River development. So, that has happened in the past. There are times where more than one city claimed, you know, has the same property within their ACI. Just to the north of there was land that's claimed by both Post Falls and the City of Hauser.
Didn't we just have a rezone of some sort, or where they took some property out of the county in that area where I think Rathdrum, Post Falls, and I don't know if Coeur d'Alene was in there, that all three of them were claiming an ACI area?
Oh, it's Hayden.
Hayden, yes, Hayden, yeah.
That was actually agreed to. That's what's known as the shared tier.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
Of the three ACIs.
Right.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate it. Anybody else, David?
Let's see if Connie wants to speak. Connie, come on, go right ahead. We can hear you. Go right ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. My name is Connie Krueger, and I'm here tonight representing NNG LLC, and the owner of that is Ashley, whose name is Dave Malgrea. We've submitted a letter of support for a zoning designation for a property that's located at the northeast corner of Hyde Prairie and Highway 53. Just a little background on this, we've been working through with I T D, Commercial Approach Committee, for a project that we have planned there for the last few years. And so, as part of that, have really been working with the county staff to ensure that the zoning, as you go through this process, continue to allow more use. So, there's a letter in your pocket that is dated August 20th with a little bit more information on this, and we are here to testify in support of zoning regulations that are being placed on the property, as long as it continues to allow use, from what we know in our discussions with the staff at this case.
Thank you. Any questions for Connie? Okay. If not, and I see no other public comments, just to confirm, Pat or David, do I do individual motions to close the public hearing, or can I combine both of them into one motion?
In this case, you can combine them into one motion.
Okay.
You can even deliberate on them together, but I would, when the final motion comes, I would move on each one separately.
Okay.
Or the one would be for the ACI boundary and the ACI agreement. The second one is for the zoning within the ACI.
Yeah, right. So, basically, for closing it, I can just use one, but for the actual accepting or denying, I'd use individuals.
Correct.
Okay. So, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing for case number O R A 13 hyphen 002 and case number Z O N 13 hyphen 003?
I saw moved.
Commissioner David has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Commissioner Rose has seconded the motion to close the public hearing. Sandy, you want to do a roll call, or you want me to do it? I'll do it. How's that? Okay, Commissioner David?
Aye.
Commissioner Rose?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sterns?
Aye.
And Commissioner Levine? Aye. The motion passes, and the public hearing is closed. We're now into deliberations, and as we discussed before, we've kind of have had background from Director Callahan several times, so I think I'll just ask, are there any other questions that people have based on the public comments tonight, or based on some of the information that we received this week? So, anybody have any questions for staff?
I would just ask if David or Pat has anything, they want to respond or say anything more about what?
Pat Braden, civil deputy prosecutor, for the record. I probably should have said that the first time. Just on the fee issue, I'll reiterate, you know, what I said in the hearing out in Hauser with the Joint Planning Commission. The fees we will charge for processing applications in the Hauser ACI will not be any different from the fees we charge for that kind of application anywhere else in the unincorporated county. And we're not, clearly not making money off of that. I think we actually run at a deficit on that, and the money that would go to the City of Hauser pursuant to this agreement would be on the back end. In other words, we would collect the entire fee and then periodically remit the percentage of those fees that the agreement provides would go to Hauser. And there is, you know, we're not just necessarily giving it out of the benevolence of our heart, although that is something Hauser pretty vigorously negotiated for, but there, even, you know, us referring applications to the City of Hauser, you know, there is some cost in doing that, in part because they use independent contractors to do this as a general rule and not, you know, not staff employees like larger cities do. And so, that would, you know, help them out in that regard. So, I'm comfortable with, you know, the legality of the fees and the distribution, and it is a, you know, it is a downramping scale, so.
Pat, you know, and David, I think that what Rand said is probably correct about the fact that while in a perfect world, if we had a clean piece of paper, this would not be in the ACI because it's not necessarily consistent with what we do.
Right.
However, in order to get the much-needed improvement in the ACI to correct the other problems that we have, this is a small price to pay in order to get the benefit for the county and the citizens of the county, is the way I'm understanding it.
Yes, I think that's accurate, and that also segues into the concern regarding the size of the ACI.
Right.
Something that not only Mr. Wickman brought up, but also Commissioner Malloy at the workshop. And again, this is, you know, something Hauser negotiated for because they believe very much in protecting the lake's watershed, and also they also want some say over their trade area on either side of Highway 53. And those are proper considerations for an ACI under state law, along with area that the city expects to annex in the future. And so, we've actually, in this iteration, we've delineated those areas specifically. This is where we want to protect our watershed. This is our trade area.
Right.
This is where we reasonably expect to annex in the future, and so those are specifically lined out to justify the size of the ACI where it isn't as it stands now. And, you know, it can be debated whether, still, whether it's too big or not, but honestly, you know, allowing the city to have the size of the ACI essentially unchanged, again, is, I think, a small price to pay to get the agreement through and the benefits that will, the benefits that will result from that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that for all of us, I know, this was a very important policy that we included in the comprehensive plan, was to go out there and look at all the ACIs. I think the way Rand talked about it, which is, they should represent what is expected, not what is today. I think that's something that we have to talk about at a future workshop. Is this something that we think should be on our radar screen for early, for next year to start strategically to think about, how do you approach this? Because I think it was clear from almost, I think, every planning commissioner felt that we have to go back and at least attempt to do this. This particular Hauser ACI was not intended to complete that mission. It was intended to fix a problem that started in 1999 or something like that. So, I will put it on a future agenda, a discussion that maybe you can give us some background of how you go about this, but we should probably put on our agenda at a future workshop, discussion on ACIs and what would the plan be. Anybody else have any questions? Barry or Wes?
I'm muted.
Okay. All right, so then.
Wes, you're muted. Oh, there you go.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we can hear you now.
You?
We can hear you now.
Yes?
We can hear you.
All right. Projecting to the future, I know Hauser is small and pretty compact, but if it's to grow, and all things tend to, in terms of my fiscal base, it wouldn't grow to the north because they're interested in new water quality. Wouldn't it grow along with the services that incrementally they provide south toward Highway 53?
I believe that's true.
Yeah, in fact, the city just annexed property within what we've delineated as Area 1 adjacent to their commercial corridor along Highway 53, so, you know, the answer to that is yes. And so, you know, and just because an area is within Area 1 or Area 2 instead of Area 3 doesn't mean they can't annex it.
And wouldn't it follow, if that is, if that's the natural area or direction, that by hook or crook, money would be bound to unappropriate infrastructure services to accommodate that growth?
That's truly a question properly before the Hauser City Council and not us.
No, I'm just asking a speculative question.
I don't think that's really proper for this particular hearing, in my view.
Okay.
Speculation and outside of the realm of the hearing.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? If not, I will ask for a motion to accept the amendments as submitted for case number ORA 13 hyphen 0002.
I saw a move.
Okay. Commissioner David, second?
I'll...
Is that Barry?
Barry, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Sterns? And I'll do a roll call. Commissioner David?
Aye.
Commissioner Rose?
Aye.
Commissioner Sterns?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Levine, aye. One of the things that I forgot to say before we took the vote, which is fine, is, and we could do it the next time, is, please feel free to explain why you voted the way you voted. And for my vote of yes on this and also on the zoning, is, again, I think that correcting the problems of these current ACI is more important than trying to fix other defects in some of the ACIs that we have. So, I thought it was the right thing to do today, and we'll live to fight another day when it comes to the size of the ACI. All right. The second motion we need is for, to accept the zoning changes as submitted for case numbers ZON 13 hyphen 0003. Do I have a motion?
I saw a move.
Okay. Commissioner David?
Second.
Who was that?
Second, I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Rose? And, roll call again, which will be Commissioner David?
Aye.
Commissioner Rose?
Aye.
Commissioner Sterns?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Levine, aye. The motion passes as made. So, we can, if there's no other business, yes...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give due courtesy and acknowledgement to the staff that worked very hard on this.
Yeah.
All of the planners on my side did yeoman's work in those various meetings I mentioned, but in particular, a shout-out goes to Levi Basinger, who was our project manager. He pulled things together. He kept us on schedule. He made sure our webpage was spot-on.
Yeah.
Levi did a yeoman's job, and it's one of the first things like this he's done.
Wow.
I'm really jazzed.
That's great.
Yeah. But all of the staff chipped in. Everyone helped immensely.
That was fantastic. And, you know, the, well, you talked about what those meetings were so beneficial to getting to the place where you needed to go, and that was great. So, that is good. Thank you, David. Any other?
Six thirty-two.
Okay, I'll adjourn the meeting at 6:32. Thank you, everybody.